I'm going to call this a meeting of the school committee co-ord. The mission of Gloucester Public Schools is for all students to be successful, engaged, lifelong learners, and I'll ask you to join me in this. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. John Gusfoot passed away this week earlier, and I'd just like to say a few words about him. He was a city councillor for 32 years, so to put that in perspective, that's twice as long as anybody else has ever done. Okay. He was known as a great advocate for the elderly and for the fishermen and for seniors, but what I'd like to talk about is he was also incredibly supportive of the schools. Maybe it's because he had 13 or 14 grandchildren going through them at various times, but he always came to events, he always participated in any of our events that he could, and something that most people don't know, because he never made anything of it, he donated his pay for being a city councillor back to the schools. So, he was a good man, and he did a great service for this community, so thank you. Recognitions, anybody?
Communications?
Oral communications.
Just speaking a little.
I have recognition for that.
Okay, great.
So I just have two tonight, both stemming from having attended the varsity girls soccer game on Monday night. That was three, because we're so good on them, they won 3-0, it was a great game. The other recognition is to the late Dawn Ficklin, as I sat there in the rain, I recall that when the new renewal committee was coming through, the Capitol Permanent Advisor Board looking for recommendation, Dawn kind of gave a warning and said, hey, you know, that's an old dump, but it's inundated by a tide, and if you try and build it, you're trying to build it, it's going to sink. And I thought, oh, Dawn, you know, you're just being negative. And I sat in the warped stands, looking at the puddles on the track, and said, oh, well, you know, I guess you had that one right, Dawn. The second is for Julie Smith, our athletic director, because wading through those puddles in her rain slicker and boots was Julie Smith, our athletic director, shagging balls that the ball girls who were in their cleats wouldn't have to go into, you know, foot-deep water, not foot 12 inches, like, you know, foot-to-foot deep water. So, thank you very much, Julie, that was phenomenal to see her out there helping out in a, you know, really nasty weather situation.
Any other recognitions?
I just wanted to acknowledge and thank those that were involved in having a forum on recreational marijuana in youth called the Conversation Marijuana in Youth for our community. That was, I think, a little less than two weeks ago, and it was just nice that the community has these opportunities to get more informed, get some facts about implications on our youth. We talked a lot about the brain development up till age 25, at the time when you're trying to boost your child's brain development, to have things like marijuana and other substances actually take a step back, to go to marijuana where they said it has impact on IQ points. So, it's just good for parents, there are a lot of parents there that were really concerned about the issue, they wanted to know more, and I think the most we can do is just be as informed and vigilant with giving our kids the proper guidance as we can.
Any others? Move on to our student advisory council.
So, hi. Last Tuesday, the student council and the NHS members had a joint unit day around the school where we planted, I think, around 60 mums round there?
Yeah, no, like a little more than that, I think.
We raved, we trimmed some of the bushes, and we kind of spruced up the place. The senior class is also having their semi-formal on November 6th, that's coming up, and tickets are on sale.
So, as most people know, October's Breast Cancer Awareness Month, so one of our teachers, Ms. Finacy, she is selling shirts for GHS Think Pink for $10. The shirts are already sold out, and they're expected to come in this week. And November 9th, three days after semi, the Gloucester High School ROTC programs having their annual cadet ball at the Elks Club. We're still planning on who's catering and just other minor details, but I think we have the date set for November 9th at the Elks Club.
Any questions?
So, where is the semi this year?
We should probably know that.
It's like this memory header wedding. I don't know where she goes.
It's like Black Swan, I don't know.
It's some hotel, maybe?
Is it like some, I don't, is it just like Black Swan? I'm not sure.
Yeah, last year we had kind of, yeah.
Country pub?
I think so, yeah.
I think?
Yeah.
Yeah, I hope so.
We had a pretty traumatic experience last year, because it was in Boston, we got stuck in traffic for four hours on a bus with a bunch of-
Hungry.
Sweating teenagers.
Screaming teenagers.
Yeah, but it was interesting, but, yeah, so we could try for a little closer home this year.
So, you guys not going?
Oh, we're going.
Oh, you're going?
Of course we're going.
You said you get to the bus.
Yeah. Yeah, we went last year, so.
And I just have one more question, how much are the tickets?
They're $40 if you're not taking the school provided bus, and it's another $20 for the bus.
Oh, okay. Thanks.
Any other questions?
How come the t-shirts are sold out so quickly? Where do you get to get any?
I don't know how, well, actually, well, Breast Cancer Awareness, it's just they sell, like, every, they sell, like, really fast. I still have all of mine from previous years, because I get one every year. And I think everyone just wants to be in that picture in the fieldhouse where everyone, like, like, just forms in, like, in the shape of, like, the ribbon. So, like, a lot of people like to do that, and I'm always, like, right in the middle next to the t-shirts, I'm like, oh, look, there I am. But, yeah, usually they sell out really fast, and they're actually, like, really comfortable t-shirts, t-shirts, so it's nice.
And then the woman, the teacher that is kind of charging, she suffered breast cancer, she's created now, but-
Yeah, a couple of teachers at GHS are actually breast cancer survivors, so it's also, like, honors them, too.
Yeah, so the students are really supportive of that, and it's really nice to see them every year. They're great, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. I mean, if I didn't have a college essay to write, I'd say-
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Move on to the consent agenda, are there any items that we need to remove from the consent agenda? Well, much of it, just the two minutes, right? So, and they're there.
I move that we accept the consent agenda?
Second.
Okay, all in favor of saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, if you mean us, consent agenda passes, and we're going to move on to deliberations on educational issues, and first up is the annual report from the Gloucester Education Foundation.
Thank you. Thank you, good evening, everyone, nice to see everybody. I'd like to introduce our president, June Steele, she's not going to be speaking tonight, but she came along to moral support. Before I get started, I will say, I'm fighting a head cold, so if my voice suddenly cracks or gives way in the middle of my hesitation, please bear with me. You know, when I started to, when the superintendent first asked me to come this evening and give an annual report, I said, well, you know, we haven't done a lot of big exciting things recently, there's not much to report. He said, you know, it doesn't matter, because the things that GEF funds year in and year out are important to our students, and they need a lot. So, I started to put together some ideas, and I thought, you know, last, last year we celebrated our 10th anniversary, and we've had a really wonderful, productive, and fruitful partnership with the Gloucester Public School District over the past 10 years, and I thought it would be a good opportunity to reflect on some of the highlights of the past 10 years, so with due indulgence, I'd like to take a little time and do that. We were formally incorporated in 2006, and that's when we made our first grants, which totaled a little over $36,000. This funding brought music instruction back into the schools in the form of after-school music classes in our elementary schools, and also after-school enrichment programs at O'Malley and at Gloucester High School. And that included drama programs, foreign language instruction, the National Honor Society, theater, a lot of other, a lot of other programs that needed funding. We also funded the first ballroom dance program, which, as most of you know, led to the establishment of the Mad Hot Ball, which is an annual, much-loved tradition in Gloucester. And we were instrumental during those early years in launching the robotics club, which was an after-school club at Gloucester High School. Since that time, the robotics club morphed into a robotics curriculum and became part of the physics curriculum at Gloucester High School, and the curriculum now offers more than 10 separate classes in physics, engineering, and robotics, and last year received awards from state and national associations in engineering educations. In the years since its inception, the robotics program at Gloucester High School also spun off some other exciting projects, such as the Sailbot robotic sailing program and the quadcopter project. One of GEF's largest program initiatives in the early days was the C initiative, a massive-funded project that brought in $1.3 million over a period of three years for a range of innovations that changed the way that science and technology was taught in the Gloucester Public Schools. Early on, this funding established a series of elementary field studies at local sites where students explore the landscape of K-Ban. It funded science curriculum development and professional support for teachers in collaboration with educators at MIT. It purchased math textbooks for the elementary schools, and for several years, it funded the summer engineering program, a collaboration between the GEF and our schools Maritime Gloucester and the Edgerton Center at MIT, and that took middle school students over the bridge to explore MIT's labs. C funding initiative also provided the resources for the establishment of the Birds by Hand Stem Center at O'Malley. This facility is now a three-broom laboratory where students engage in a range of activities that allow them to apply their classroom learning in science, technology, and math to real-life experiences. Instead of merely reading about wind currents, they learned firsthand by designing, constructing, and racing wind cars and crafting wind turbines. They learned about the principles of construction and the properties of building materials in class, and then used this knowledge to build bridges. They learned about physiology and cell structure from their textbooks, and then studied life from the inside out by dissecting frogs and examining bacteria under additional microscopes, and I apologize if nobody's eaten dinner yet. They're able to design and create objects from spools of plastic material using 3D printers. Students manufacture paper from recyclables, they create bird via diesel fuel, study earthquakes using a seismograph, study wind, wind and weather from data gathered from the iconic wind turbine on top of O'Malley. They gained an understanding of natural habitat by designing the building bluebird nesting boxes, and many more that I'm sure I couldn't recall when I was putting this presentation together. At Gloucester High School, science and technology has also been the beneficiary of the GEF and district partnership. In addition to the aforementioned robotics program, GEF funding has helped the district acquire the Shabbot Digital CNC router for the Capitol 3 program, sensor equipment textbooks and glassware for chemistry, and a few years ago, a new computer lab and program that is now offering several classes in computer science, including an advanced placement course. A few years ago, GEF helped the district acquire its first 3D printer, which utilizes industry-standard software that gives our students marketable skills on the outside. This gave rise to the addition of a new class in design and manufacturing at the high school, and more recently, GEF funding enabled the expansion of the 3D printing program. Now Gloucester High has a standalone 3D lab with several 3D printers where students can design and fabricate their original creations. The GEF-funded Genome Gloucester Summer Program at GHS helped lay the groundwork for incorporating the study of genetics into the school day curriculum and the establishment of a new program in biotechnology. In collaboration with the district, GEF funding provided a broad program of teacher professional training in Google applications for the classroom to support the implementation of the one-to-one Chromebook model. And just last year, GEF funding established a new creation lab in the high school library where students can learn how to write, produce, and edit videos, write music, and undertake a range of other creative endeavors that support their core classes. But it's not been all about science and technology, the arts have been a key focus of GEF funding as well. We have consistently provided support to the music program, funding after-school music program lessons at the elementary and middle schools these past 10 years. In recent years, as the day program in music at O'Malley began to take shape, we provided support for the acquisition of new instruments, performance chairs, music stands, and other equipment for the music room. Last year, we awarded the district, it ran, more than $125,000 for the refurbishment of the O'Malley music suite, which was completed over the summer, and that, of course, was the result of an outpouring of support from members of the Gloucester community who participated in our 10th anniversary gala auction last November. We have consistently supported theater in all of the schools. GEF grants to our elementary schools allow students to work with real-world theater professionals, professionals who teach our students diction, voice projection, stage presence, choreography, movement, and other theatrical skills as they work on their spring productions. At O'Malley and GHS, GEF funding in recent years has upgraded the lighting and sound systems and has given students the opportunity to be exposed to the technical side of theater. GEF donors funded a state-of-the-art photography and graphic design studio and purchased ceramics kilns and easels at Gloucester High School. We funded art textbooks at the elementary level, and all of Gloucester's third graders learn about American dance forms through our program, Dance Through the Decades. The Artistic Bridges Program, a collaboration with the K-Ban Museum, brings visiting artists into our schools, and the District Wide Arts Festival, which by the way, will begin its 10th year this spring, is a citywide showcase of our students' talents and features performance and visual arts presentations by students virtually all of our schools. We have provided support to the high school electrical technology program to incorporate the teaching of alternative solar and wind energy and equip students with marketable skills upon graduation. We have supported summer literacy programs for our elementary schools, vocabulary and writing programs for O'Malley. GEF donors have funded sound fields amplification systems in all of our K through 2 classrooms, iPads for O'Malley, and gardening education programs at all of our schools. We helped expand the Math Olympians in Richmond program to all of our elementary schools, and now the program has rolled up to O'Malley as well. GEF has funded programs at the high school in dating violence prevention, and will be funding more in the future in the area of social-emotional learning for all educational levels. In addition to direct funding, GEF has also been a partner with the district in applying for outside grants that have brought additional resources into the district. O'Malley Academy, which is the extended day summer program in our middle school, was the result of a successful submission to the state for a federally funded 21st Century Community Learning Centers grant, and I think everybody probably knows that the program was just refunded for another three-year cycle and was cited as an exemplary program by the state. The Emerging Learning Commons at O'Malley was the result of a grant that GEF collaborated on with the district and submitted to the Cummings Foundation, and within the past year, GEF collaborated with district teachers on two successful submissions to the Massachusetts Life Sciences Center to establish new labs at O'Malley and at the high school. In doing all of this, we've had a close and very productive partnership with the district. Often, the district leadership will come to us and ask us for support for an initiative. Sometimes, it works the other way around, we will go to the district with an idea. Quite often, a teacher will come to district with an idea that he or she has been calling over and asks for support, and we do encourage teachers to dream big and to look on GEF as a partner. There's a formal process through which programs are vetted, considered, and approved. All funding requests go before the GEF Programs Committee and Board, and no program is awarded funding until there is understanding by an agreement with the superintendent, and consensus by the GEF board that the program is in compliance with our mission, and that mission is to drive innovation, encourage creativity, expand student opportunities, and empower educators to strengthen teaching and learning in the Gloucester Public School District. GEF's board is an incredibly hardworking and dedicated group of volunteers who care about our children and the future of our schools. All of us at GEF are grateful for our collaboration with the district, and we're especially grateful for the incredible generosity of this wonderful Gloucester community. As we like to say, we're all helping our students think the best. Thank you.
It's just, it's phenomenal what you've done for the children of the city. There is enough words to say thank you for all the hard work and the innovations and the advancements that have really put us ahead of many of our neighbors, and I really cannot thank you sincerely enough. I should not thank you sincerely enough.
I too want to thank you very much, not only for all the work you're doing, but for the time that you put into this foundation. I came on the committee back in 2008, and that's when, about the time the market started to crash, and we as a committee sat here and had to make tough decisions, and those tough decisions were eliminating art classes and theater classes and things like that, and while the public was not very happy with our decisions, it was survival, that's what we had to do to keep teachers in the classroom. So, I can sit here and honestly say, we would not be what we are today without you, because through your efforts and fundraising, we've been able to restore what we had lost, plus so much more, and that, I truly believe, is what made us go from a Level 3 district to a Level 2 district, and why our school district is looking attractive now to other communities. So, we are who we are because of you, and there's just not enough thanks that this committee could give you for all that's been done and all the great things that are going on in our schools. So, thank you.
Joel?
Hi, thank you for coming tonight. So, one of the questions that I have about GEF, it's obviously the large donations that GEF provides to the district drives changes in curriculum, physical changes in the buildings, staffing changes at the schools, and you mentioned that sometimes the district has a wish list, and GEF kind of makes items on that list happen. Sometimes, GEF says, hey, district, we've been looking into something, and we think it would fit well in the middle school area, and so I'm curious what that ratio is, more often than not, that GEF is the initiator, or is it more often than not, the district is the initiator?
I think in the early years, GEF was more of the initiator, and I think Kathy can back me up on this, because she was around, I've been here since 2012, but I think that was the case in the early years. I think it's become more of an equal partnership recently. For example, a few years ago, we had the idea of 3D printer, and we knew, we knew, one of our board members, a couple of our board members are scientists, and they knew about this, and they knew about Fab Labs and all of this stuff that was being created out of MIT, and we looked at it, and we had a couple of teachers research it, and, you know, Greg was here at the time, and we spoke with him about it, the superintendent, and, you know, it took a while, and it took us a while to implement this in a way that it was really properly implemented and useful, but that was one example of an idea we brought to them. Recently, we awarded a big grant to the district last year for a staff position, and that was, that was something that we developed in collaboration with the superintendent. He actually met with our donor, and with the superintendent, and then Dr. Yunovsky, who was here, we crafted a proposal to the donor, and, you know, presented that, and it was funded. So, it really, it's really a pretty equal partnership. A lot of, a lot of our more recent grants have come out of ideas and teachers, which we like to do, too.
Well, I was just going to add, I can add though, too, also in the early years, when grants were, you know, when there was funding and donors, sometimes the district might have wanted to use that to backfill what should be coming from the budget, but GEF's mission has always been, you know, so after-school programs, which we felt was integral to the middle school community at the time, and really a tremendous offering for those, for those kids, may not have been the district's top priority for that kind of money, but GEF felt that that really fulfilled the mission of providing enrichment and opportunities for kids, as opposed to, its mission has never been, and we never have filled budget gaps. So, that's just one example of, but maybe there might have been a preference to have of what happened.
I just want to thank you so much for coming here tonight and recapping everything you've done over the last 10 years, because I personally can't remember everything you've done, it's been so much. I, it's just incredible, I've been on the committee since 2008 as well, as Melissa, and in the very beginning, it was a little bit different, it was a little bit of, you're going to tell us, or you were going to work with us and introduce these programs, and then we weren't quite ready for that, so it was a little bit of, you know, a little bit of controversy, I suppose, I don't even really want to say that, but it was a little bit of push and shove at the beginning, but you guys came alive and just ended up working so well with the district, and you were saying that you were grateful to us, we are immensely grateful to you guys and everything that you've done for us. I mean, our district, as Melissa said, wouldn't be where it is today without you, and we just, I just thank you so much for everything that you've done with our community.
Can I just comment on that a little bit, because I don't like the word controversy.
I didn't want to say that either, but I was trying to figure out a word.
So, I just want to refresh your memory, because I'm sure you remember this, when the Gloucester Ed Foundation first started, what we would do is have the Gloucester Ed Foundation representatives come to our program subcommittee meetings, and there would be discussions back and forth about what would be the next opportunities that we would have. So, it wasn't that it was controversial, but there was a lot of dialogue back and forth of what great thing we were going to do next, so I just don't want-
Thank you for that.
That's how it worked for like the first two or three years of the foundation, it was, it was a very interactive conversation between school committee, and then it morphed into what it is now, which is absolutely wonderful. So, it's always been great.
The first years were almost the hardest.
Yeah, exactly.
It was difficult.
Did you mind if I shared a few words? Sure. Since the 10th anniversary, and because I've been there, and a lot of the discussions, and been a recipient of the hard work and generosity of the Gloucester Ed Foundation. There are a couple of things that you mentioned in sharing this long history that I just want to emphasize for everybody. You've probably noticed that Tina's very well-spoken and excellent writer, and that came across in her report tonight. That is the reason why we've been awarded so many of the grants that we've gotten recently. She's been not only an incredible collaborator, she seeks out new opportunities, and then is really terrific at writing very compelling grants, and so there's a piece that sometimes goes unnoticed, that you don't see in the monetary gift to the district, Tina herself has been a tremendous gift to the district in so many ways, and we really have developed an incredibly collaborative process for identifying projects, and we have monthly meetings where it often begins with, with GEF saying, so, what are you hoping to do? What are you looking for? What's, what's on the horizon? So, we begin with what I really like, which is, you know, what's out there and what's positive, and what can we, can we go for? It was a bit of a push at the beginning, but I have liked, I have enjoyed the push right from the start. It was a bit of a push at the beginning, but I have liked, I have enjoyed the push right from the start. Because I think we all need to be pushed sometimes out of our comfort zone. And it's really developed very quickly into one of the best relationships I've ever seen between school and an educational foundation. I want to note that on the 21st Century Grant that we received, not only did you help write the grant, but the work that was happening with the after-school program that was GEF-funded provided the foundation, upon which I think we were awarded that first grant. It was so easy to think about the middle school and how that grant would be crafted because of the work that had happened before for GEF. So it wasn't just the writing of the grant, it was all of the foundational work that happened because of the programs that were being funded. That was a huge piece. Very quickly, a couple of other things that stand out in my mind. I remember being in the 3D pinning lab after the Make-A-Thon with the printers. The students all created the 30 printers. And you may have heard this before, but I walked in, and there was a student. One day, I came in and asked what she was up to, because she had harnessed six printers all at once, and they were printing, she was printing out what looked like digits. And they worked, because she had been researching and designing prosthetic hands and how she would create one, and had six printers all printing the different parts, and was assembling them into something that was really quite amazing. And she was talking about how that's something that she would love to go into is developing prosthetic limbs for people. And there she was, and she might have been in sixth or seventh grade, and just took over the whole side of the room and was all printing different pieces. It was extraordinary. And she had researched and designed them on CAD and was printing all of those out, and really knew exactly where she could go with it. That was one of the, I still have the pictures on my iPhone of what that student was up to. So it's been a combination of support, but also inspiration. And I have said earlier on that, and I'm glad that it was mentioned about the tough years, it gave us the opportunity to dream big even when everything was pretty grim. When we were, all it seemed like we were doing year after year was cutting, cutting, cutting. And by having that separate, you know, resource to be able to meet the dreams of the teachers and the district is amazing. And I think really a bit lifeline for us. So personally, it's been such a pleasure to work with you, and I hope it continues for a long time. But you and the GEF, the foundation have been an extraordinary resource and gift to our district. Thank you.
I just want to make a comment also. I am also connected with the foundation. I have been for a really long time. And it's one of the things that makes me most proud is the ways in which, you know, our schools can develop and grow and get better and better. And one of the things that always makes me feel great is the generosity of this community, not just financially, but in ideas, in guidance, in their willingness to help. So some of the ideas come from people in professions that know what that profession might be looking for. So those are the things that kind of help inform, you know, what is possible for our kids. And I think when you're, you know, when you're a teacher and you're in the schools and you're not necessarily out in a different industry, you need those people to say, hey, look at this cool thing. Well, how did that person go from A to Z to be that person? And I think those links are getting stronger and stronger. The O'Malley program, after-school program, has a very strong connection to career. And they try to have every program have a visit to Beverly School of Death if it's sign language course, or if it's a robotics class, they go places to like Horizon and things. So we really are showing our kids not just doing the actual experiment or experience that they're having, but what's the groundwork that gets you to fulfill your dreams? Like, you know, for you printing, and what does that mean for your future? And I've been involved for so long, there have been programs, I think, oh, I can't wait till my son gets to do that and gets to do that. And tomorrow, he's actually going to be, hopefully, in a car that sails. At least we'll have the opportunity to see if his car sails.
One of the coolest things I heard about with the summer program for O'Malley Academy is students attended a zero robotics camp, and they actually did live streaming with the astronauts on the space station. They were so excited.
So was I.
Well, first of all, thank you, because as the city council, when it was first approached, and we were doing budgets, and we always have to cut the budgets and cut the budget cuts the budget, a lot of programs were being cut. And that's when parents said, enough. And it wasn't, they started a group to say, we're going to tell the schools what to do. Well, they're our children, we have to invest in our children, and we have to do it. If you can't take money this way, we're going to take it this way. And that's really why it started, is because people in the community said, okay, you know what, you have to cut, this one's cutting, but our children are important. We hated the negativity that was happening all the time. I was impressed, thank you very much. She spoke to a group of relatives, and they said, wow, you do all of that in the Gloucester schools? Because nothing gets put on what we do. If something negative is going to happen, it's going to be in the front page, but nothing positive. We kept saying, well, we need to do this, we need to do PR. And you were the best one, because when I talked to the group after you, and it's very difficult, I went another day, and they said, that was amazing, that group is amazing. They left that they know more about Gloucester. Because if you remember, some of you were with me when we read on someone's little Facebook that they said that, right there, because we took it, that one of the relatives, which you're not supposed to say how your school is or whatever, said Gloucester schools don't even bother buying a house there. That was the most insulting thing in the world, and we were all furious. But because you did go and the programs that we're doing, that a lot of people don't even understand why we're doing it and how we're doing it, and the fact that we are doing it, we want to thank you. Because the fact is, now we're looked at, Gloucester's moving forward, and it's amazing what the school kids are doing. Because not only are they enthusiastic and want to go to school and doing things, they're telling their friends who school chose out who want to come back in now. And that's a big thing. And that was the most things that parents slept back then, is they wanted to remember, or they wanted a different school, school choice, they also wanted the charter, you can't offer it. And the parents and the people that got together said, yes, we can, and we will do it. And we did, so thank you.
You know, we always believe that the strong schools help to build a strong community.
Yes.
So thank you. Thank you very much. We clearly wouldn't be the same as we are now if it weren't for the Gloucester Education Foundation. And we have a lot to be proud of this because of a lot of what has been done for the Gloucester Education Foundation. Thank you very much. And enrollment, who's got that? You should have enrollment, there's an Excel sheet in your package. And this is simply an October, a collection of the October 1 reporting with enrollments, as of captured on October 1. And I'm sure you had a chance to preview it, but there is a slight correction in looking more carefully at the 2016 October 1 figures. The total was actually 2,930. So the reduction in enrollment is a matter of 25 students. Not, I think, a slightly larger figure was discussed possibly at the last meeting. But that is a correct figure for the comparison from last year to this year. You'll note that there were some slight changes, slightly lower at the high school. The middle school is up a fair amount, almost 30 students over last year, up to 670. Beeman relatively stable, about 11 students fewer. East Gloucester, Long Cope, very similar, slightly down at Veterans. And increase at the, at West Parish Preschool, also up to 107 from 96 last year at this time. So a net change of 25 is, I could say, within normal fluctuations. Are there any questions about the October 1 numbers?
Did you come, how many went to Essex Tech this year as opposed to last year? Because I know we took in more students, and she actually was took in from E to 98.
Yeah, this does not reflect this, and it does not reflect out-of-district places.
So on the second page, the second chart is students attend Gloucester schools and follow, or reside in the following city. What is the second chart, is that students that, where they are? Which?
These are...
It's by school. Are those, which school they are choosing?
Top one is coming from the town of Sandro Rockport-Hamilton. And then the next chart should be the exact same numbers in the grade levels, but it shows where they are in the Gloucester schools.
Thank you.
So it's not something you want to look at vertically. What happened to the three, it's one that's mixed, where they land.
All right. Any other questions from the enrollment? And we want to do the superintendent's report.
Well, Dr. Sapphire didn't want you to miss another gripping installment of the superintendent's report, so he asked me to stand in.
We should just say Dr. Sapphire is not here tonight. He lives with the family. He will be returning tomorrow.
So I'm going to read word for word in an approximate interpretation of his voice.
Okay.
I'm just going to skim some highlights, if that's okay? And if you have any questions, please stop me, and we'll focus on those. Item number one, free and reduced lunch numbers. These are as of October 1. There, as you know, there was a transition last year to a different kind of calculation, the economically disadvantaged calculation. And that includes a variety of number of auto enrollment, kinds of programs, SNAP, TAFDC, foster care. So it captures a lot of those kinds of programs where there are already students enrolled. So for sharing with you right now, I think it's, since you have a long history of taking a look at the free and reduced lunch numbers, and we have a number of years that we go back historically. It makes sense, certainly during bridge years like this, to take a look at something pretty familiar with it, which is the free and reduced lunch. Last year, on October 1, out of a total of 2,948, and those of you who are perceptive may notice that that's a slightly different enrollment number over the 930 figure that I just cited. That's because what is in meal magic sometimes doesn't reflect students who may have been withdrawn at the schools and has not flowed through meal magic yet. And a lot of action happens right around that October 1 day. So that was what was being held in meal magic, 18 other more students. But the overall percentage in the district was 50% last year at this time. That has increased to 52.1% as a district figure. So we are up 2.1% on the free and reduced lunch numbers. The difference, and this is a very accurate, I checked today, that 2009 was only about three or four students off of the October 1 enrollment. So it's not an 18-student difference, it's very close. So this reflects having done a really careful job of making sure every student has identified and identified and accounted for. So 52.1% district overall, you can see the distributions across the schools. Any questions about free and reduced?
Yeah, I do. So I know there's a difference in definition of economically disadvantaged versus what? And I thought the implication would be that our district would actually be showing lower numbers.
Well, we don't have the economically disadvantaged calculation number yet for this year.
Is the economically disadvantaged used differently than the free and reduced lunch?
It incorporates the free and reduced numbers as well as other indicators. And across the state, the difference, it declined about 12%. So you would expect to see, and that's a bit in line with what we're seeing. So as they do that overall calculation, it's almost a reset of the levels, if you're looking at the economically disadvantaged numbers. But for this report out on October 1, where we have the free and reduced lunch numbers that we collect locally, I'd like to share that story.
I just have a comment. It does seem odd, because median income at Gloucester is increasing, and the topic values are going up, that at the same time, our free and reduced lunch is going up. And I don't quite understand that, but probably they're thinking into...
I think part of that is the better record-keeping we've had in the last 12, 15 months with our staffing change, food service. So I don't think we can make a direct correlation to the economic conditions at this point. We need another year.
So what you're saying is in previous years, that they had actually, the reporting was low.
Under reporting.
So we could have been 60% possibly.
Item number two, professional development. I will just mention a few things about professional development. You have a report of many of the activities that took place on the 3rd, which was a half-day early release. At the high school, topic-based discussions. They're very excited about the work that they're doing there. And they focus on student growth in, I believe there are eight different areas that teachers were able to identify, groups that they would like to work with for year-long development of goals and growth in their teams to work on these issues in the school. It's a great idea, and I want to look at part of the same, how they do over the year. The middle school focused on PBIS, which you've heard quite a bit about in the past. We also had several consultants come. Richie Biz came and did some work with our math teachers. Kevin O'Reilly, former social studies department head from Hamilton-Wenham, came and worked with our social studies teachers on decision-making, instruction decision points. I'll tell you about that sometime again in the future, because they look like they're going to spend quite a bit of time this year working on those instructional practices. So it'd be interesting for them maybe to come and talk about what they're up to. At the elementary level, we had a little bit of a breakdown there. There was a lot of work for almost all of the K-25 teachers on calendar math. And I just want to point out, both in ELL and in math, the math and literacy coaches and the teacher leaders who are on the teacher leader committees and parent professionals took on the roles of leading and training their colleagues. And this is something we didn't see a lot of a number of years ago. We began to do this in earnest four or five years ago. And to me, it's particularly gratifying to see how far they've come and how much they are taking on those roles. It's a hard thing to do, because a lot of work that's involved, and you're putting yourself out there. But we had literacy coaches co-leading with principals for grade levels to take a look at the standards-based report card and scoring rubrics. We had math teacher leaders actually splitting up and leading small group sessions on calendar math. And we also had several parent professionals who were acting as trainers as well. We hope to do a lot more of that in the future and mix outside consultants with our in-district expertise. It's a great opportunity, they did a terrific job. Questions on professional development? Coordinated program review, this is a quick one, just to let you know that we, after some delays, received our final draft on October 6th of the coordinated program review. We have until November 2nd to provide a response in form of a corrective action plan. And that's something that, after we complete that corrective action plan, it might make sense to report out on those activities.
Did you see the copy of the document?
We have. It is posted on there, on the website, on the interface that we can access.
How can we get access to it?
I will...
Send us the link?
Pass that on to the superintendent. I don't think, it's not publicly accessible, but I will see if we can get a copy.
We'll wait to see it before the corrective action report's ready. Thank you.
Any other questions on number three? Fourth is about accountability reporting. And just to draw your attention to the fact that, a couple of things. One, official results can't be released to the public until, I believe it's on October 18th. So if people are asking, parents are asking, why haven't I gotten my child's MCAS scores? It's because we are not allowed to release until the 18th, and that's a statewide embargo on those. Superintendent, and I will have conference calls before that release. And we'll make sure that those are sent out to parents and publicized as quickly as possible after the 18th. Accountability reporting, I think there's been discussion previously about this year being mostly a whole harmless year. As we shift to a new generation of MCAS, there's a lot of work that needs to be done. As we remember MCAS 1.0, there were a number of years where scores needed to be calibrated. And it took a while for things to settle. And so I think it was a good decision to have accountability status. So with harmless, that does not happen for the high school because the high school stayed on the, has consistently been on the last version of MCAS. So high schools have an accountability rate. And other schools, three through eight, do not have an accountability rate this year. It's held in a holding pattern. And next year, our understanding is that those will be back in place. It's important to understand that, if you recall accountability status, if you have one Level Three or Four school in a district, your district was identified as a Level Three or Level Four district, your accountability status for the district was whatever the lowest school was in your district. It appears that that's going to change in 2018 once the accountability scores, ratings are reintroduced. But that it may be likely to be at a district level. So the overall district scores will be taken into account rather than simply your last. Now, there may be other unintended things that go with that. I'm not quite sure, but it's an interesting development. So I think that's it on item four. Any questions? Number five, similarly on next generation MCAS. It's important that the superintendent wanted you to be aware that he attended our recent North Shore Superintendent's Roundtable. I've heard a presentation from a DESI representative who discussed the level of challenge reflected in the new MCAS. And that all indications are that it is harder, it's a tougher assessment, it's a more challenging assessment. And that the shift of thinking that we may need to keep in account is that it may be focused less on grade lower proficiency and a little bit more on demonstrating your preparation for the next grade. And I know that seems like a subtle difference. I'm not quite sure how that plays out, but it really could be emphasized that rather than mastery at a certain point at grade level, have you laid down the building blocks for success in the later grade level? And once items are released for this, we can take a closer look at that and see possibly how things have shifted a little bit in expectations. The bottom line is that we've been told to look for some scores that statewide may be lower than we've seen in tests, that it reflects the challenge of the test. I just want to remind all of us here who may face those kinds of things that Massachusetts is continually ranked at the top of the country and even the top of the world in native PISA scores. So we're looking at a state that is continually pushed to have one of the more challenging, most challenging assessments and highest levels of expectations. And even in this state, with the assessments we've had, it may have been turned up a notch as well. So Dr. Sapphire mentioned in paragraph four that anecdotally what has been communicated is that fifty percent of the students' results statewide will have met or exceeded expectations, while fifty percent will have partially met or not have met expectations. So I think we're being prepared for what could be a little adjustment in our expectations. Now, those may be modified over time and may be recalibrated, but that's the advanced work. So we'll make sure, I believe there was a request for the active commissioner to communicate that on a statewide level. Just sharing.
So I have a question. If your child's taking these exams and you're in seventh grade and you kind of know what you know, and you know what you've been taught, and you're now being assessed on something you have not yet been taught, how demotivating can that possibly be for kids who leave an exam saying, "I've never seen that before"? Why were they asking you that?
So I think what we'll need to do is we'll need to take a look at exactly what is meant by demonstrated preparation because I don't believe what is referred to is not having seen it or not being taught. But are we providing the fundamental... Let's say I'm in seventh grade and there are fundamental standards that are key building blocks for success in eighth grade. I should have been taught this and I should have mastered that, but it's a bit more forward-thinking is the way I read it. As in, these are the ones you really need to have solidly to make that next leap in eighth grade. Yes, it should be in the curriculum. Yes, it should be taught. So I don't think it's a matter of not having seen it before, but it may take, and it doesn't appear that our district will be alone in meeting this challenge, since it seems to be a statewide issue. As we may need to think really carefully about our pathways to the next grade. And all of the published standards, we may need to think a little bit more carefully about those that are providing the most important stepping stones for the following grade. And we'll see exactly how that plays out in the assessment. But I read it as, you know, you need to think carefully about the standards you are emphasizing. And we're going to be assessing your readiness for the next grade.
I just want to say thank you for that answer because it's an answer I've been waiting to hear from for years because all we've heard is how we teach to the test. You know, over the past years, we want to know what's on the test and that's what we're teaching in the classroom as opposed to, like you said, building the foundation and allowing the students to learn and have the confidence to go into a test that maybe you didn't see it the exact same way, but yet you've had the support and the understanding in the curriculum that can support you making a decision on something that you haven't seen before. So I really appreciate that answer because for many, many years, we taught, we teach to the test. Why do we have MCAS? All we do is teach you to the test and the majority of stuff on the test isn't what we're going to be doing in real life. So I thought, yeah, answer to that, just hit the nail on the head.
Thank you. Again, I just have to reiterate, this is new. We have a lot of items that are not released because they are still going to use them next year and continuing to tweak them. We don't have good, we haven't established a baseline track record yet. What I understand from the language and the focus is exactly what we're suggesting, which is a subtle shift to are we making sure that we are achieving mastery at grade four, but we're also thinking really carefully about the foundational pieces that need applied? So we'll see how that plays out. I do see your point and how that's maybe a very positive shift in mindset. And it could be some growing things too.
Yeah, it was mastery of the standards. I would probably mistakenly, but presume that those would be mastery towards progression through your grades until you get to twelve, which then you should be also progressing. Of course, we should graduate kids at grade ten because that's when they're done according to the test. But who decides how these children are prepared? Who's going to make these questions? I mean, that's a concern for me because it seems to have got the goalposts keep changing out of DESI. And this seems to be another venue, or not venue, but avenue for them to be able to keep shifting what they expect you to teach. And then again, and with no, zero financial support for all the extra work that has to be done administratively and professional development. And this is a concern, that again, we're changing the goalposts. I'm all in favor of it. And like I said, I would presume that mastery means mastery to be elevated to the next level. So this concerns me that it's more coming from on high without any input from people up front.
I understand that you're concerned and it's a valid one. I don't want to speak for the superintendent. He is more recently, we're very well versed in this and perhaps he can provide a little more insight at the next meeting. But I would say that as long as the assessment is a good one and it's grounded in the published standards, that we should be able to adapt to the challenge of, you know, thinking carefully about this that are providing that preparation for the next grade. I understand it has felt to a lot of us, I'm sure teachers would feel the same way, that it's a constant challenge and it's turned up each year. And I would say some would argue that's how we've reached and maintained our status in the nation and the world as a leading state of education.
It is hard. I have no issue, but we need the resources to be able to... That's...
So we administer these tests in March and April. So we think that our kids, say in the third grade, they're ready to move on to fourth grade in March and April. You know what I mean? They've mastered grade three or grade four kind of early before the end of the school year. So that makes me a little nervous that they, how are they actually mastering that when they still have all of April and all of May and part of June to go through?
Well, I think that's always been a challenge. And I think every teacher who has been involved in preparing students for the old energy MCAS knows that there's always a challenge with pacing and always trying to make sure that you have covered and instructed well in the material that is going to be on the assessment. It's always a challenge. It doesn't mean that the remaining couple of months are not going to be full of continued learning. It simply means that at that point in the year, and hopefully that's what you do when you do the calibration of the assessment well, is you know that, yes, we're looking at readiness for mastery and readiness for the following year. And we know that generally speaking, at this point in the year, they should be demonstrating some of those mastery skills in preparation for next year. So I have faith that the calibration over time will be done well and that it will be many. And yes, it's a lot of work.
Yeah.
And it's a challenge for the teachers.
Lauren, I am, we stick to item C.
We did.
But it's really an action item.
I move that we accept the superintendent's report. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So, number C is a request for supplemental appropriation for the purpose of purchasing furniture and equipment. This stems out of our last year's budget negotiations with the administration when we were reducing, I want to say two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars to bring our budget in agreement with what the city was recommending. And in the course of those discussions I had with the administration, it was suggested that if we cut seventy-five thousand dollars from furniture, that we may be able to request that money back when free cash comes available. So this is simply a vote to request a supplemental appropriation for the city for the amount of seventy-five thousand dollars. What?
Seventy-six, five, forty-one.
Seventy-six, five, forty-one. All right? That's the right number.
That's the right number.
That's the number that we got. So...
Or the number we'll request.
It just needs, it's really just a market, but the time is right.
But it has to go through the administration, the city council?
Yeah, we're just, all we're going to do is send a request to the administration. The administration will deal with it. However, they deal with it. Yeah, we need to make a move.
I move that we request for supplemental appropriation for the purpose of purchasing furniture and equipment in the amount of seventy-six thousand, five, forty-one.
Five, forty-one. Second.
Is there any further discussion? All?
What's the furniture?
There was...
Classroom.
There was a whole collection of furniture spread throughout the district.
There was tables, some chairs to replace.
When would it be purchased? When would it be purchased?
If we get an appropriation, we're not sure when they're out.
We had that list when we were doing the budget about the furniture was. We just kind of had the last minute.
I guess, I'm curious, as, you know, we're a mother son of the school year. Are we able to just get through the school year without our budget this year? Trying to go next year, do we need it this year? Or are we learning that we can just handle what we have?
As a teacher.
I think the situation is that, as with everything, everything has a life expectancy. And much of the furniture that we use, because it always gets neglected, is beyond its life expectancy. And if we don't continually replace the worst of it, the next year we just have twice as much as life expectancy. So this is, if you think about computers going out of date, furniture does the same thing, lasts a little bit longer.
It's similar to, you know, that something's only leaking a little, so can we wait till next year?
Which we do every year when it comes to furniture.
It's why it's costing me a fortune for the roof. I don't want to talk about it.
It's not all furniture, like in Omeley, there were chrome books that were cut. So what Lucy did is she moved some of her other buddy at the back fella, and we need to replace those spots as well. So she did move forward to get what she needed at the middle school. She did it at the expense of other clients.
This is just something that we agreed to back in April. And just following, reminding the city that we had that discussion. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Present.
Opposed? It carries six, two, in favor and one present. Acceptance of grants. We have, it's only appropriate, two grants from Gloucester Education Foundation. First one is for Gloucester High School Marine Science and Oceanography on the Adel, R G H S, for Omeley Climate Change and Coastal Communities, and Omeley Awesome Gloucester G E F Challenge in the amount of sixty-four hundred dollars.
So much. Second.
Any discussion? Joel?
One of the GEF grants, I think it was the $5,500 one, mentioned that it was to be matched by a PTO. And I'm curious what happens if the PTO fails to match.
Oh, sorry, would you like me to throw a second? Take a shot down?
I'm sorry, it's a $3,000 one, the sale in Atlantic Atlantic.
Oh, I'm, okay, I'm sorry, I was thinking the $5,500 for the Omeley Academy.
Yeah, that was my mistake. It was the $3,000 for the sale in Atlantic Atlantic. It is our understanding.
That's the next one.
Yeah, that's the next one.
Oh, sorry, I don't understand. Sorry. Sorry, we thought we'd draw that request. That's the next one.
Okay. Is there any further discussion on the $6,400 grant from GEF? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? unanimous. The second one is grade five students to sail to the Atlantic Atlantic and the Omeley Academy in the amount of $8,500.
Oh, someone. Second.
Okay, discussion.
Somebody got a question now.
So that's your question, and.
So, it's a good question. All I can say is that it would be better answered by a GEF representative. And I can also say that the discussion took place in the summer with principals to make sure that they had discussed this with the PTOs in advance and that there was commitment to fund that. So there's a trust relationship here that the PTOs have anticipated this and will be supporting that in advance.
I'm going to assume the answer is, I'd like to ask the question, if the PTO fails to match, GEF is not really seeking to a return of the funds that were not matched?
I don't know the answer to that.
If we don't use them, they won't. We sit down with Tina a couple of times a year and look at unexpended funds because it does happen.
I'm more concerned about the matching aspect. If I say, I'll give you $3,000 if you can match with the PTO, if the PTO's come up with $200, I go, well, my match with, you know, I'm donating a match here, you came with $2,200, so I need $800 back, kind of thing. I can't imagine GEF is going to do that, but it'd be nice to have that somewhere as part of this vote. This $3,000 is coming regardless of how well or the PTO does matching.
I think we hear about it, if there was an issue at one of the schools, for example, if they were having code fundraising, they would come to us and see if we can do something out of the budget or contact GEF. And if they can fill the gap.
Correct, my friend, I think what I hear you saying is that we sometimes have unexpended accounts within GEF, and that at times they have allowed the use of those to backfill something that wasn't funded as well. So is that what you're suggesting? If it came to that, and the PTO needed help, it might work, too.
Possibly. We don't like to practice that way anymore. We'd rather return the funds and have them re-grammed.
Re-grammed, yeah.
So non-answer answering.
All I know about, I don't know the direct answer to the question, but I know that this program has been going on for.
Yes.
Since you were in school.
My son's thirty-four, he didn't.
But, and, it's been going on for quite a while, and it's been funded, it used to be funded probably just by, like any field trip, you know? They collect five bucks from each kid or whatever, and.
PTOs used to find funding.
Yeah.
It was significant enrichment.
Yeah. And the Education Foundation has picked up some of the costs, but I think it was being paid for before the Education Foundation existed by the PTOs. So I think this is, the Education Foundation helping out the PTOs as opposed to the PTOs helping out the Foundation.
No, no, I appreciate that. My issue is that this came up a few meetings back this year, and it was this thing that, you know, these grants come forward, very limited information, and if there's questions about it, you can, you know, say, well, I can't vote for this because I don't know the full details, and you look kind of like a jerk, and there's this thing that, well, we'll get more information, make sure the school committee is better prepared to fully understand what these were. And the packet, again, it has this nice little letter saying, and it has this little clause with the match in it. And again, I assume that this is more of an encouragement, like we're helping the PTO out, GEF is helping the PTO out here, and we hope they're going to be able to match us, that's what the plan is, and we're not going to seek to call back. But it seems there's, you know, a bit of information that's missing.
Well, but Greg did explain that all the principals talked about it long before the grant was made this summer. So that principal, all the principals have a relationship with their PTOs as to what they're going to request from PTO funding. So I hope that's where the issue would have surfaced.
The issue, there's a condition in the grant, and there's no explanation as to a default in this condition.
But we just said that they were doing it before the grant came. Actually, the foundation is doing us a favor by giving us money because now the PTO doesn't have to cover all of the expense as they've been doing long before the Gloucester Ed Foundation came along.
Right.
So I don't think that we would really need to worry about the match and being taken back because.
Then why made a condition?
History has shown that they've gone regardless of a grant helping them to go because it's something they've always done.
Then why made a condition?
Nothing more informed.
GEF has made a condition of this grant, that our understanding, so they're relying upon a representation that the PTOs are going to match us, and I'm just curious what happens to the PTOs.
They're identifying money to be used on the land and only, and making sure that that's going to be where the money goes with that condition. Instead of them just saying, I'm going to give you $4,000, we hope you use it towards the land, and they're saying, we're going to give you $4,000, use it towards the land. And that way they know where their money's going.
With all due respect, I think the differentiation is that they could have said a grant of $3,000 for use for grade five on the land, period. And that would have been unconditional for a grant for a specific use. Instead, they've deliberately used language that says, it is our understanding the PTO will match this. And so I'm just curious, what happens if the PTO does not meet this condition?
That's my favorite thing during grants, is I ask all the time as the city council, is it a match? Because yes, we've had match, we've had grants come through the city and couldn't make the match. And what happens is either you have to, the person who's accepting the grant has to pay, which would be the school, or the PTO, which is the school. But remember, if it's $3,000 match, then the program costs $6,000. In order for the program to stop, they have to raise that. So they can't even take the match, they can't even get it until they match it. So I'm sure they're not going to do half of the fifth grade class. So they have not even do their fundraising, they have a match. So the program's going to cost $6,000, three from the Gloucester Education Foundation, and then three from the PTO. If the PTO does not raise it by the six and the dots, then they hold off. It has to be returned, you have to have the match, that's how it is. The PTO will raise it. If it doesn't, then it sits in, they'll work towards next year. But what they're doing is, is because it's never failed and it's always worked out, they just put it in that way. But it's right, if, we're responsible if they don't. If we have, if we put everyone on the land in all the fifth grade classes and we didn't come up with a match, then we'll have to find it in the budget to reimburse that $3,000.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? unanimous. You know what, we have the approval of Melissa Texer as a representative to Essex Northshore Agricultural and Technical School, as recommended by Bob. And I suppose.
And a second.
Is there any discussion?
Well, discussion is that before I was mayor, Melissa's been doing this, she's been a great representative since I've been mayor, interment, elected mayor. We get all the information that we need, we have great representation on there, which we need. Not only bringing her background as an attorney, but working with children through the court systems, and just being on the school committee for so long. I trust her, and I like the liaison, and I like her being there for me.
I just want to be someone. First, I want to thank you very much for the confidence in what I do, and I appreciate the support of the committee, if that so be tonight. I just want to say, you know, this is a volunteer position, and I do put a lot of time into the committee, and I can tell you this committee needs someone that's going to put a lot of time in. And we've gone through a lot over the past couple of years, and successfully are moving forward in the right direction, and a lot of good things are going on at that school. Gloucester represents about 10% of the school, so when you think of budget, we think 10% Gloucester's responsible for. So I think it's very helpful to have someone like me, if you know, there. My experience here, negotiating contracts that I've had over the past 10 years here, came in very handy when we were trying to bring three schools, being Essex ID, Northshore Tech, and the PBD School together to negotiate contracts. It was an overwhelming task that took two, almost three years to accomplish, and being a big part of that in my experience here was very helpful. Another big cost saving was going to the GIC from health insurance. At the tech, in the beginning of the years, they had this healthcare trust, which was very heavily funded and probably the best health insurance anybody could ever want, but it came with a price. And when I became chair, we were given an opportunity to go into the GIC because Essex Tech is a state school. My experience here, being on the public employees committee, I learned a lot about GIC. Now, we can all agree that GIC may not be the best thing always, but in this situation, it saved a tremendous amount of money, not just to Gloucester, but to other municipalities, too. So I guess what I'm trying to say is my experience here has, does bring a lot of good accomplishments at the school, and for that I'm grateful because I truly believe we are a very well-oiled machine here. We've all worked together for years, I think our budget here is great, I think our programs are doing well, and what I've learned here, I bring to that committee. And on that committee, up until the last meeting, there was no one else there that had prior school committee experience. They now just got a new PBD representative who also sits on the PBD School Committee, so I'm looking forward to working with her because that experience does prove to be, to provide good outcomes. So I do hope you support this. I can say that Gloucester is very well represented at the table and in all the discussions at that school. So I would appreciate your vote tonight, and thank you if you do so.
Any further discussion? Joel?
Through the chair, I have a couple of questions. So of the 12 members in the committee, 12?
Twenty.
Twenty. Of the 20, you and PBD are the only members who are also school committee members from the respective member districts.
Yes.
Okay. And so you just mentioned that we represent 10% of the population.
Absolutely, yeah.
So our budgetary contribution to this district is dependent upon our student population.
Enrollment, yeah.
So the fewer students we send, the less money we have to send to the district.
Yep, and it goes by the last year's enrollment, like this year is based on October 1st enrollment last year.
And so in my experience, the, this school, especially since the new one has been built, it is a competitor to the Gloucester High School in that, like this year, last year, students that I knew aren't at GHS and would have been asked at GHS because they found the tech to be a more inviting or, you know, a better option. And so as you, as a school committee member here, are trying to do its best for this school committee, for this school district, and you as a member of the school district for the tech are trying to do your best for that district, the more successful you are at the tech, the more difficult, or do you believe the more successful you are at the tech, the more difficult it becomes here? And the better you do there, the more challenge presents for Gloucester High School?
So my answer would be no. I don't, I don't look at it as competing schools. I think they're two, I don't want to say very different schools, but they're very much different. We offer 18, I think, now, new programs. We just added two more at the school that Gloucester Public Schools cannot offer, like HVAC, dental assistant, nurse's assistant, things like that. Not everything is about money. I, your question seems to me more about, and I could be wrong by getting this impression, how, how do I fight for a budget here and then fight for a budget here and not do the best that I can, knowing one impacts the other? But I wouldn't say that it's not all about money, it's about programs, it's about students that don't fit, they don't feel they fit into this community, they come, they've been around the students here and feel that they're not comfortable. I would say that's a majority of the reason why the kids go to the tech. It's not just the programs, it's how they fit into the school and their peers. So I don't see it as competing with each other, but I will say that when, budgetarily, I sit on all the subcommittees as chair, that's my responsibility. So when we're developing a budget, if I see something that's going to be very, very expensive, I do take into consideration what the impact is going to be in Gloucester because you, there's only one budget that comes out of Gloucester. But do I see it as competing and I'm not doing the best for both districts? No, what I'm seeing is I'm bringing my experience and my conversations that I have there to that, from here to there, and knowing that that's how it impacts all the municipalities. What I'll say is, well, this is the impact, if I'm having a conversation at the tech and I know it's competing here, I'll say, I want you all to go talk to your mayors and find out, is this something you want to do for this school? Because it is going to have an impact to the budget in your community, and make sure that you have that information going forward when you do a vote. So I don't see it as competing, I see it as trying to collaborate. I always talk with Dr. Lupini, Superintendent Lupini at the tech, Superintendent Sapphire here, find, are there ways to collaborate? And there are, and those discussions are going to happen. So I don't, I don't like the word compete, I think it's more bringing it together, each school serves its purpose. One school does this, one school does that. I mean, sports here is big, it's not as big up at the tech. HVAC is big at the tech, it's not here. Is there a way to collaborate? And there are ways to collaborate. And that's what I think I bring to that committee, is bringing the two schools together instead of being competitive. Because there was a time that it was competitive, when, if you remember years ago, there was a vote where we almost didn't stay member to the tech when we were building the new school. But through discussions with the city council and the mayor's office and this school committee, it did turn out that we made the decision, and I believe wholeheartedly, the right decision to stay involved with that school because of the opportunities that it offers that we don't. So I don't know if that kind of answered your question.
So.
But I feel I did the best on both, and I don't feel either school suffers. I think it's just a lot more information sharing, knowing that I know both school systems. One's a regional school, this is not. I mean, there's operational differences, too, so.
So, so thank you. And I will definitely say is that your willingness to do both, you know, is commendable.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Tony?
I want to say, I will definitely support Melissa to be reappointed, and having these opportunities for our kids at Essex Tech is, you know, we want, clearly, I would like our kids that do, that want vocational programs that we have to stay here. So when I think of competition, that's really where I say, you know, as we boost our machine to, you know, 2050 standards, you know, and with that grant and things like that, Michael would be, all of our kids stay and get educated with their peers, with their friends and their community, and, you know, have that experience. But there's some things we're not going to be able to provide. And so I wish them well when they go somewhere else to get that particular direction pathway that they find. One of the things that I know Councilor Gilman brought up is, which is good to have Melissa on the committee, is, you know, somebody came back and reported, oh, they don't have any sports fees. So that piece of information is good to say, hey, Melissa, we really, you know, how is that fair when all the communities that are participating in Essex Tech have sports fees, and we are now paying the full vote for the sports fees at the tech? So that information can get back to how they can have discussions at that particular committee level as well. So that, you know, they do consider what, what our family's looking for, what's important, what's, you know, are we, if they are competing, are they competing on a level playing field? And maybe that's an area that they can have a discussion to say, we should be charging something, we can't have that be a reason somebody likes our school. So I think it's good to have someone on the committee there.
I just, I know we've had people who have not been at all involved in the schools in understanding the types of impact being our representative, and I found that that was probably not the best choice. Having Melissa there, I know she voted against budgets while she was there because she saw to her effect. She also was very instrumental, and leadership changed there because that leadership was extremely bloated, not in their own, in their own grandiose way, and they were very wasteful, and not directly going into education, and Melissa. And Melissa was very instrumental on creating change there. I think that her role on that school committee has been extremely critical and very important to, to this community. And having, having that type of facility available to our kids is also something that we as a community should take pride in, not view it as a detriment because it may take some, it should be viewed as an opportunity for our students to go there because so many wonderful offerings. And with the new facility, that is quite expensive, but we, Melissa is a very good watchdog for us where before, you know, we were, there was 90% of the other votes voted for those bloated budgets. And now hopefully PBD, who also has a more heavily weighted vote, will be quite critical view of these budgets to say, look, we need to be on a level playing field with our, with our member communities. So I think having Melissa there is, is extremely important for us.
Thank you.
I agree. Tony, and what Kathy has said, I think Melissa's been very, very helpful being, with her experience being on this school committee, bringing that to the other school committee and vice versa, has just been very helpful to us. Whereas, especially when Turner was talking about the budget, she knows what our budget is, she knows what we can afford, she knows what we have to cut all the time. And then when, you know, she's up at the tech and they want to have this, that, and the other thing, and she, she just totally pays attention to everything that's going on. She supports our schools, I believe, first and foremost, and I just will support her as being our representative again.
Any further discussion?
I just want to say one last thing. Not, not, I thanked everybody, but as we move forward and talk about building schools, I just think it's very important that we remember this is our third school that we're going to be building because we did build the tech and we are paying for the tech and then we did build West Parish. So the next school, this is our third school in 10 years and we should really be proud of the work we're all doing collaboratively because that's a really huge accomplishment.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Carrie? Carrie's a six to one.
We now have a whole collection of policies that the personnel subcommittee reviewed and has made some very minor changes to it. Our agenda says we're going to vote the employee handbook, which we are not going to do because there are other policies that are still under review and have been sent to legal to, for a, for an opinion. But these policies are, like I say, they're all just a change of a word or two.
With the exception of one.
Okay, so we're going to, we'll take these one at a time.
I just have to find, I'll spoken to Dr. Sapphire, who will be with his beautiful paper.
Do you have the paper, Rose? I'm going to the tab.
I know, but this is a new machine for me and I'm going to be all the places to take it.
I can tell you what the changes are, if you want.
So with the, oops. So in the packet, like Jonathan just said, some of the policies are just one word, so I don't know if we need to do them individually. The only ones that we would probably need to have just a tiny bit of discussion is the tobacco policy where we add vaporizer into it. Other than that, the substance of these policies has not changed. So.
You want me to just summarize this quickly? I can see.
Yeah, you want to go ahead.
So on, on file G B E E, the whole change results in taking out the World Wide Web and replacing it with the Internet.
And I so move, say it. And I suppose the motion would be, it was, we met on September 25th as the Personnel Subcommittee. It was Joel, Michelle, and I. So the motion would be that it was recommended by the Subcommittee to amend policy G B E E to reflect internets and wide web. That should be the motion, recommendation from the Personnel Subcommittee.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
The G B E D, it, in, the use of tobacco products, products or vaping tobacco or otherwise is added to where it just used to say tobacco products.
So I'm not sure if you all know what vaping is. I would think I know that you would, but it's become a very common habit by some young students. And because the vaping usually involves nicotine, it's not the best substance to be putting in your body. So we added vaping to the tobacco policy, thought that would be the best fit to put in our policies to prevent that type of behavior from happening on school grounds. I think this is something we intended to do last year, but we never got to it.
I think we did on one, but I don't think we did.
Well, we were going through them, there's two here that we addressed. So the recommendation is from the Personnel Subcommittee to recommend to the full committee to amend policy G B E D to add vaporizer to the title and then add products of vaping tobacco or otherwise to the policy.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Saying none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, it's unanimous.
The next policy is similar. We add some language. It's policy J I C G, tobacco vaporizer used by students. So in this policy, we added vaping to tobacco or otherwise within school buildings or facilities or on school property or buses is prohibited. It's very similar to the policy we did before, but the prior policy that we just voted on was for staff members, this one is for students. I mentioned it last time. So the recommendation is to the full committee to adopt the language of as presented tonight in policy G I, J I C G. Nice and move.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous.
So as you can see, in some of these policies, we're just changing one word, so I just wanted to give a little background. We are obviously working on the employee handbook, we've been working on it for a year, it's just now starting to come forward. And the three of us literally have been going through this policy word by word. So not that we're trying to do anything other than just try to fix the language, get the book out so that it's appropriately written. So in the next policy, sexual harassment, you'll notice we're adding the word assistant superintendent is the sexual harassment grievance officer because the prior language just said that the committee will annually appoint one. So this way, instead of someone wondering who it is, we, it's been identified as the assistant superintendent. So that's what the recommendation is. So the motion is to recommend to the full committee to adopt file A C A B with the amendment of adding the word assistant superintendent is the sexual harassment grievance officer. Nice and move.
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry, on the next page, is a her designated was added.
The, what if the assistant superintendent is not available?
It's the.
There's no, there's no fault.
So we had this discussion, even though he's the grievance officer, but there are other people involved in the procedure of violating sexual harassment, so that there's always somebody available. He's the official officer. It's not like you have to make your complaint to him.
Well, that's what it says you do.
He's responsible for processing them. So other, others, Dr. Sapphire has stated, others are involved. You can actually report it to any administrator, however, the responsibility lies with him to make sure that the complaint is processed correctly.
But what if, for some reason, they're not available, the assistant superintendent's not available?
Then the superintendent will designate someone else.
Do we need to add that to the policy? Well.
Or the, or the superintendent's designated.
Let's say it was against the assistant superintendent. Not, not even. Fourteen was free.
We can add the word and/or the superintendent's designated.
In, in.
But we just needed to identify someone because we didn't know by this language.
I don't think you want to say and/or, I want, you know.
Or the superintendent's designated.
No, just in case of availability.
Or any alternative, the superintendent's designated.
I would not make it and, I would say if the superintendent is unavailable, then.
I just wanted to have, know, I wanted someone to know who to go to.
I know, I think it's a great idea because I mean, if I can, if you remember, is that in the poll?
We never did.
So do a super, assistant superintendent or the superintendent's designated?
I wouldn't have or.
So I moved to amend this motion that we add language at the end of the insertion that says, or if the assistant superintendent is unavailable, the superintendent's designated.
Okay, so I second that amendment. On the, is there any discussion on the amendment? All in favor of the amendment? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Back to the policy as amended.
So it does say that in section three, by the way. Says superintendent or his or her designated name to gather any more.
After reviewing the record.
We had this discussion.
I think this, I think that's fine.
So on the policy as amended, is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, it's unanimous.
The next one, file G B E B, staff conduct, what we did was replacing the words teachers and others to all staff members. Nice and move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, it's unanimous.
And finally, on non-discrimination, file number A C, the recommendation from the Personnel Subcommittee was to recommend to this committee to change the word love to this, public school system. Nice and move.
Second.
Any discussion?
I just want to quickly thank the Subcommittee for dealing with these minor edits that I put forward. So thank you again for doing this.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. And I think that's it for our policies changes and that's it for action. We'll move on to the other discussions, other communications, new business. Massachusetts School Building Authority project update. I think all we have to report out on is that last week, we had the initial meeting of the building committee for the East Gloucester Vets project. And it was pretty much organizational. We elected officers and the chair.
You are?
Yes.
Aren't you lucky?
And Rich is the assistant supervisor.
He's always a bright smile, isn't he?
Yeah. So anyways, all we did, we talked organization, we went through the process. We agreed that we would have a discussion about possible sites at our next meeting. And it's not a discussion geared around picking one, it'll be a discussion about identifying so that it's, that we cover everything that's, that might be a possibility.
And when is that next meeting?
It is a week from tomorrow at four o'clock here. It's Thursday, so it's whatever day that's with it, March 12th, 19.
19.
But other than that, what much report, Kathy?
How many people are on the committee that aren't staff members or school committee members?
Who is the committee, committee meetings? Like, are there any public, I mean, non?
Yeah, there's, 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 there's a couple of parents, well, at least one parent from each school. There's, oh, there's two.
Hi.
Two, what?
See, parents, see the construction.
He's probably there in the construction anymore. I think he has kids in school.
Who's this?
This, this, I think my daughter is a sophomore, she did go through East Gloucester and he lives, he lives next door, so he's.
He's also a contractor. I'm trying to remember, there are 17 people on the committee. And the, as you said, all of them are required by MSBA to have certain, people have to be on the committee. And then there's, there's a number of slots for additional people. I can get your list. I don't, I can get your list. I haven't, I, I'll, I'll pitch the agenda for next meeting.
Kathy mentioned, is there a Vets parent currently? And if a Vets parent wanted to join, would it be too late or would they be able to petition her?
I think it's Ari of Allen.
What?
She sees Gloucester.
Oh, she is?
Yeah.
She just lives downtown.
Yeah, she lives on Allen Street or in that area, but she's, she, her kids live at East Gloucester. I'm just trying to remember who wasn't there. There were a couple of people that, that weren't there, that weren't city employees. I don't, so you know a whole lot about their background. But I will get that for you. Any other new business? Stephanie reminded me that you all have to, if you haven't signed the.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, I have it. I have it right there. I have it at the office.
I'll open the meeting log if you need to do that.
Sorry.
Just to say.
Open meeting log? Yeah, you have to sign it.
I know our minutes are posted on gloucesterschools.com. They also throw in with the batch, if there are any else on the state website that can collaborate, so.
Does anybody need one of these?
No, I can fill one of them.
What you get?
No, I'll take one.
Harry, fill one off.
Yeah, it's.
So we fill it out with it now?
Yeah, you can fill it out. It says you understand the open meeting log.
Yeah, because there's changes.
There's some changes, they made some changes back then.
It's going to Stephanie or?
It's Stephanie.
Did you add a minute requirement?
Okay.
In 30 days, you have to.
Yeah.
One more thing, I just want to remind everybody that the Gloucester Public Schools and the Gloucester Education Foundation are hosting an education forum on November 2nd, which is a Wednesday that we do not have, or sorry, November 1st, which is a Wednesday that we do not have school committee. It'd be great if we encouraged people in the community to come. The speaker is a gentleman named David Rose. And he, the topic is how we teach and how they are. So it's about different learning styles and, and he apparently is a phenomenal speaker who, a couple of people have set off these directives. So encourage your friends and family to come. Should be a useful evening.
Anything else?
Or should do a journey?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.